My pleasure to reply, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. And Mr. Administrator, would you take a roll call for attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBounty.
Here. I have a couple of people who've signed up to address the board. We have a public hearing on Local Law Three, Local Law Four, Local Law Five, Local Law Six, which was addressed in the last meeting. And I will just read the rules for commenting and addressing myself and the board. Individuals wishing to speak during public comment period must sign up. Speakers must be recognized by the mayor. Speakers must step to the front of the room. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization if they belong to any. Speakers must limit their remarks to five minutes, and I'll have the administrator keep track of the five minutes. Speaking time, please. Speakers may not yield any remaining time to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt the speaker during the remarks, but only for the purposes of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body, not to an individual board member. Speakers must observe, commonly accept the rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representative may also address the board by written communication. And basically, we're all adults. Everybody's going to be given an opportunity to speak for their five minutes. Don't make it personal. Everybody's going to listen to what those individuals have to say, and there more than likely won't be any remarks until maybe when we go to vote as a body on each individual local law. So the first individual that has signed up to address the board, it looks like Tom Batha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Tom Batha, Ross's Point. I have a question about this Local Law Number Three, permitting trustees of the village to be part-time employees. I just heard about it yesterday in an email. As you know, I've been on this board off and on since 1985. We've addressed different things like this have come up in the past. In 1985, the village passed a resolution disallowing trustees and the board to participate in village insurance, health insurance. We had one trustee apparently that they made an arrangement for, and he was off the board. We just eliminated that. We traditionally, or annually, pass a list of procedures and village procedures and protocols, basically rules for how we govern the village. And there's, I don't know if you still do that. We did it every year the last four or five years that I was on. And it said, one of them was that the board could not pass any laws or rules that affected themselves personally. Also, you couldn't buy village equipment, stuff like that at the auctions. Now, the question that I have is, when we pass a village ordinance or village law, it is supposed to be for the benefit of the residents of Village Ross's Point, every law that we do. And as you know, they're not cheap to pass a law. You have to, you know, you know what you have to do through it. I would imagine it costs several hundred dollars for each law. No, it's good when you put four of them together because it's going to cost the same amount to do four of them, pretty much, right?
How about a little more expensive, what?
Well, I mean, you're advertising, you're printing. The big thing is printing the village code up. Now, what I would like to know, a few years ago, before I was on the board, or in between when I was on the board, a couple of trustees, a couple of businessmen got themselves elected to the board, changed the village code to personally benefit themselves financially, and then got off the board later on at the end of their terms. That appeared to me to be in complete contrivance of our village procedures and policies. Now, my question to the board is, since I don't know anything about this thing, is, what is the benefit to the village residents if we pass Local Law Number Four? What, what?
Number Three.
Three.
Excuse me. Yes, Number Three, I'm sorry.
I will, not getting into a long debate over this, Mr. Batha.
I don't want to debate it at all.
No, no, and I appreciate you coming and asking that question. Basically, I can tell you that since I've been the mayor in the eight months, we've advertised for various positions in the village to be filled that are empty, from crossing guards to laborers in the rec center to laborers and the work crew to people who work in our electoral department alignment. We have been unsuccessful. We've advertised on several occasions. And this, this local law, the only reason that we're even entertaining it and brought it to the attention of the residents was because, right now, we have only one person in the electoral department. If that person is unavailable for whatever reason, being sick with times with the flu and the COVID, or he's somewhere on vacation, or whatever, we have an issue with our power, we have nobody sitting on the bench. The only way that the elected trustee would be, if we vote in that direction to allow this to happen. He wouldn't be paid any benefits. He wouldn't work on a weekly basis. He wouldn't be a boss. He wouldn't be a supervisor. The only time that this trustee, if we pass this law, would be allowed to work, basically in emergency situations only, to assist if there needs two people in our electoral problem that, if there needs two people to be worked on this problem, or, God forbid, if something happened to the individual we have now for various reasons, and we have nobody. We'd have to turn to Tupper Lake, and we'd have to be at their mercy when they would have arrived here, and it would cost the village residents a great amount of money, as you would probably guess, being former mayor. And that is the only reason and thinking behind this local law change.
Okay, I got you now. So that's to get Brian in to cover this thing, which makes sense.
And that, there is no hidden agenda here.
I didn't say you were.
No, no, I didn't say you were. I'm just trying to, for anybody who is out there listening to this meeting, I have, as the mayor in eight months, I have not, I tried to be above board. I tried to be upfront with everybody. I have no hidden agenda. Trust me, if I didn't think that this was something that would benefit the village, and if all these guys disagreed with me, I'd be upfront saying it. I don't care if they'd all disagree with me. But I do not see this as a losing proposition. We need to have some type of situation for a backup individual, especially in our electoral department. We've lost people that we, as you all know, to NISIC and other, the city of Plasper, because of various reasons, from wages to benefits to whatever. But right now, we're down to one. And without that, another individual as a backup in an emergency situation, our village is in trouble.
Now, that makes a lot of sense to me. I didn't know that, but because Brian would obviously be the one to do that, and he can't do it, it's too dangerous to do it like as a volunteer. You're just going to go in there as a civilian and say, okay.
Our insurance wouldn't cover that, as you all know.
Yeah, you have to be covered, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
And if you'd just say no, little Tom. We've consulted with NICOM, we've gotten Attorney General opinions, which talk about this kind of situation, and the local law's been tailored to, for that purpose. It's emergency situations. And in the meantime, just so you know, we're still advertising, trying to attract.
I know what it's like being a mayor.
We're still trying to attract someone.
We can't even get crossing guards.
I think personally, if he's going to do that, he ought to get paid for when he gets called out. I'm serious. He ought to get paid, whatever his rate is, when he gets called, if he did call out.
Absolutely.
He ought to get paid for it.
And once again.
Because it's separate from the village trustee.
That's right. The only time Mr. Pelkey would be utilized is in an emergency situation. He would not boss anyone, he would not be a supervisor, he would assist, or if there was something that our present line people couldn't figure out, then he would give his expertise as he worked for the village in that department for thirty-something years.
There's not much chance of that happening.
But that's, that's the background of it, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, I mean, we have a board, we as a board have thought of this, and this is the only reason we're doing it, is to help the village. Because if, like we said, if Jason's gone, or Jason gets sick, or gets hurt.
Well, you have to have two, besides, right? Isn't it, motion regulations or something, you have to have two guys in the.
Yeah.
By regulations, we have to have two people working on that substation most of the time. And right now, we've got one.
So it's just, safety issue.
It's a safety issue, plus it's for the, it's for the benefit of the residents because we don't want them to be out of power any longer than they have to be.
It's not for any personal gain of anybody on this board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Batha. Then we have Jet Throne.
All I want to do is point out that you run the potential running a foul of Section Three dash three hundred, Part Three. No person shall simultaneously hold elective and appointed position. No person shall simultaneously hold an elective and an appointed village office except that commissioners. And there's another exception for volunteer firefighters. So you might run, you quite possibly run into an issue where you have a trustee being an employee at the same time, which runs a foul of Section Three dash three hundred, which I have a copy of for everybody.
Anything else, Mr. Throne?
There could be a conflict of interest issues as well.
And that's why we have to do.
Well, as our legal representative has indicated, once again, I didn't rush into this, or we didn't rush into this. The administrator and I have called our legal counsel, Mr. Bernane. We have called the legal advisory to the municipality's NICOM. We went through this slowly, and we didn't rush into it. And once again, there's no hidden agenda here. We are not trying to get Mr. Pelkey any extra money. We are trying to protect the residents in case of a situation where we have an emergency, where we need two people to work in that substation, or if Mr. Juno is unavailable for whatever reason. That's the only reason that we're doing this at all.
And we do understand the fact that inherently, it could be a conflict of interest in doing that. That's why in consulting with NICOM and getting certain opinions from the Attorney General, that indicates this is how you should address this issue. That's why we're passing this local law to address the issue of this fact.
No one else has signed up to address the meeting, so we will go into our regular agenda. I need to have the board review the minutes of the November twenty-third meeting. Everybody should have a copy of that, those minutes. If there's any changes to those minutes, I need to know about them, or if they want to be accepted, I need a motion to do so.
Is it the twenty-third or the twenty-first?
First. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on, the twenty-first, I apologize.
That's okay, I'm just looking at you, Jim. I make a motion.
Accept the minutes as printed?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the November twenty-first meetings? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Bills, Mrs. Pelkey?
No additions, no deletion.
The trustee should have a copy of all the bills. If there's no questions on any of those bills, I need a motion to accept those bills.
I make a motion, we pay the bills?
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the bills will be paid. Correspondents, Mr. Latchamore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one thing I have for correspondence, and it's something that I wrote up. And I just wanted to let the residents know that our parade of toys this year, again, was a huge success after being put on hold through COVID. It was amazing. I would like to thank the fire department for escorting Santa Claus to Ross Park. Benny Arnold for patiently waiting for him to bring him back to the destination after visiting with the children. I'd like to thank the sheriff's department. They did a wonderful job directing traffic so we could sing Christmas carols with Santa walking down Lake Street to the village gazebo. I'd like to thank Penny for the roundup of the community singers for some Christmas carols, which was most enjoyable. I would like to thank Santa Claus for making himself available to be part of our parade of toys. A special thank you to Laura and Jeff Sissom on behalf of the Ross's Point Library and Friends of the Library for giving the children's books. I'd like to thank the water plant personally for decorating the gazebo and the water, their garage and water plant building for this event. It looked great. I'd like to thank the electric crew. They did a great job of putting up the decorations, everything looked wonderful. And of course, I need to thank Benny Ar, Trustee Arnold again, not only for helping me with this event, but for everything that he does every day for the village and the residents. I want to thank Mayor LaBounty, Trustee Pelkey, Becky, Patty, Rose DeSo, Stephen DeSo and his family, Sandy Menard, all for helping serve hot chocolate cookies, apples, and handing out books. I'd like to thank Lauren and Gia for being Santa's elf and handing out the candy for Santa. This event was made possible due to generous donations from the American Legion Post nine twelve, the Sons of the American Legion, Cornerstone Drug and Gift, Power Text, Shazzy Orchards, Texas Roadhouse, Sam's Club, and Lakeside Coffee Shop. Thank you, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Latchamore. Anything else, Mr. Latchamore?
No, that's all I have to mention.
I have on my agenda a couple items. The fire department on December seventeenth, from noon to three at the fire station, will be giving Santa rides and residents' rides. And for insurance purposes, I need to have the board approval to allow the fire department to give Santa and all the residents who want their rides on those fire trucks. I need a motion from someone to allow that to happen.
I make a motion that we allow the fire department to give rides to the children.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of allowing the rides on December seventeenth for the fire department on the fire trucks, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll head on to the local laws. Local Law Number Three, permitting trustee of the village to work as a part-time employee. Is there any discussion among the board members in regards to this? If not, then I would like Mr. Latchamore, the administrator, to take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pelkey?
I am staying.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez? And Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. Local Law Three is passed by the majority vote of the board. Now we'll go on to Local Law Number Four, amending Chapter Nineteen of the Village Code, subsection nine dash three, the insurance coverage. Is there any discussion among the board in regards to that local law? If not, then I need the administrator to take a roll call vote on that also.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez? And Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. The ayes have it, the Local Law Number Four has been passed. Local Law Number Five, amending Chapter Nineteen of the Village Code, subdivision nineteen dash one, holidays, that's in regards to June nineteenth, a new holiday recognized by the federal government. Is there, if there's no discussion on that among the board, I need the administrator to take a roll call vote on that change also.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez? Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. Local Law Number Five has been passed by the majority of the board. Finally, Local Law Number Six, amending Chapter Twelve of the Village Code, subdivision one twelve dash thirty-three, Schedule Four, Stop Intersection. That's adding a four-way stop on Maple and Pine Street. If there's no discussion, then I need the administrator to take a roll call vote on that also.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez? Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. The ayes have it, Local Law Number Six is passed by the majority vote of the board. That's all I have to bring up. Trustee Arnold?
I have nothing at this time.
Trustee Menard?
I'd just like to thank the village crew for doing a great job on the holiday decorations. Village looks great. Thank you very much, guys. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Pelkey?
I have a couple of things. I met with the wastewater department, and they had a DEC inspection, and it went very well. They got very high praise for how clean of a plant and how well-run that is. I think that they're doing an excellent job at the wastewater. So it's very, very nice to have the DEC give such a pat on the back that I bet you what they're going to do there. Water plants are working some overtime because of the south winds are blowing, of course, it steers the lake up, so they got to clean the filters a lot more. So they're getting through it, they're keeping our water clean and safe to drink. The street department put in the drainage tile that goes to the stage, and they're working, they started the pathway to the stage, it looks really good. So I think that's going to be a good addition, a good addition to our parks down here for people to access the stage, for the fans and, you know, the handicap people. If we ever have to get an ambulance or anything down there, at least they'll be able to get through. The last thing I have is the Parade of Lights is going to be on December tenth at seven o'clock. So it's going through the village. I don't know if you ever find out the route, did you?
It's the same as last year.
Same as last year. So it's going to start at the boat launch at seven o'clock, it goes throughout the village. So if you ever see it, it's something to see. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing.
Chief, you got to say to Trustee Arnold?
Yes. I'd like to say that we had quite a turnout on the holiday train. We served, Mr. Pelkey and I served a hundred and seventy-five cups of hot chocolate, and we had probably about three to hun, three hundred people, two hundred and fifty to three hundred people there. We had a really good turnout, and the church received thirty-five hundred dollars from the CP Rail for the food show. That's all I have.
Thank you. While we're on that subject, I'd like to thank you, Trustee Arnold, and Trustee Pelkey for serving that hot chocolate. I had promised to do it, but I ran into a dental issue, which did not permit me to be available on that particular evening. So I want to thank both trustees for filling in for the mayor on that day. And other correspondents will be involved with Mr. Cooper, the code officer. He is not here today. So the one thing I'd like to mention, right to the camera, once again, to the nonsense on Facebook, the village of Ross's Point is not being sued in any shape, form, or manner by ERS. It's another fantasy by the Facebook people. We can, you can contact Mark Haynes, the owner of ERS Pfizer property. You can contact Mr. Andrew Stalcott, who could verify it. Nobody has to take my word for it. There is no lawsuit pending in this village, against this village, of any shape, form, or manner since I've been the mayor for the last eight months. So that's just a totally absurd remark to be pushing forward. It's scare tactics, it's not going to work. I'm going to put it out here like I've done before on this television, and I'm going to tell the residents, do not worry. I invite you to come to my office anytime you want. Some of the residents have taken me up on that, and I have put some of this nonsense to rest by just a ten-minute meeting with some of our residents. And I can, I will continue to put that out there, that I am open to meet with any resident at any time that they want to discuss any subject that they want. I have nothing to hide. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have one more thing. You have one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
You have one more thing?
I do. So in your packets, you'll take note that I put down from the Clinton County Planning Department. And this is going, a letter for a use variance that was filed for sixty-four Maple for the warehouse and distribution. So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that the response from the Clinton County Planning Department was, the county, the county planning board wants to suggest the village review its zoning. The location has overly restricted zone and could interfere with the potential business, seeing the village as a valuable location. It's currently zoned as an I-two, and there's a lot of restrictions on the I-two. And I had a talk with Matt from CDC regarding this as well, because Matt is trying to market it to try to get some potential tenants. And with there being so many restrictions and having to go through the due process of a use variance, it's putting a hard stop as far as trying to solicit other business to entertain moving into the sixty-four Maple. So I felt that it was very beneficial to share this letter because the board can consider changing the zoning of that I-two or permitting some uses in the I-two zone. And I think Tom can elaborate a little bit more on it.
Right, I mean, yeah, there's no question that the I-two zone was created when Wyatt Theres was there. So if you look through the I-two, the permitted uses or special permitted uses, most of them have to do with the production of pharmaceutical products, warehousing of pharmaceutical products. It was, it was basically, and Wyatt Theres property, it is the I-two zone, or the current ERS property. So in my opinion, I, it is very restrictive as to what can go in there. So even the warehousing operation that got approved by the zoning board a week ago, they hadn't, they hadn't requested a use variance to be able to get that approved by that property because any warehousing there had, had lasted quite a long time ago. So it wasn't a pre-existing non-conforming use situation. So I think it does make a lot of sense to, to review the zoning, particularly in the I-two zone. I mean, we can look at other areas as well. I've seen other areas that are developing in a, in a certain fashion that, that our uses are getting a lot of use variances, which we haven't generally seen. I think it's more looking at the I-two zone. So if the board is so inclined to do that, commonly how that's done is like the village board or town board, whatever board, would usually make a referral to like the zoning board in the village and say, we'd like you at least to look at this, see what you think, and maybe come back to us with certain recommendations. Certainly, I think warehousing in that zone makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of open space where if somebody wanted to come in and build a warehouse, something like the industrial park in the town of Champlain, or even like the village of Champlain, that would be an ideal location for that type of use, in my opinion. So if the board is so inclined, initially, I think that's what would happen. You'd make a referral to the zoning board to get some feedback to you. Again, it would require changing the local law. We'd have to conduct some public hearings so that the community could at least hear what we're doing. And it may just not be just changing uses. We may have to add other, like, say, restrictions to like setbacks from any kind of like residential areas that might butt that area, and things of that nature. But in my opinion, I think it does make some sense because there's no question it's very restrictive in that zone.
I, I agree with you that we, we have to open up our village to a lot more businesses in that area, and warehousing definitely fits that description. On that light, I just want to inform everybody that the administrator, Mr. Latchamore and myself, are going to be taking a trip to Montreal tomorrow at the invitation of the warehouse company to view their facility. They, they are dealing in making the shelving for Walmart Canada. They're, they're going to be moving to a Pfizer facility, and they're hoping to snag the Walmart USA. And that will lead to potentially some manufacturing jobs, hopefully, and that'll open up a whole new possibility for the village residents. So we have some good possibilities. We are trying to create opportunities for these businesses to come to our village. I think Mr. Bernane has stated it quite correctly, that we need to change our zoning in that particular area. We developed the Academy Street extension for that purpose alone to divert the truck traffic from the main part of our village. It's fully operational since Ers was built and so on and so forth. So we have all the facilities in place, and it just makes sense for our residents, and it'll help us develop our village in the future. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything else to say before I ask for an adjournment for this meeting? Mr. Richter?
Scott Richter, sixteen Pratt Street. Just asking on behalf of another resident, I asked a question on Facebook. Has the village reached an agreement with Champlain EMS on their contract?
Have they reached agreement with whom?
Champlain EMS on the contract. Champlain EMS on the contract.
No, we are, we have meetings scheduled with our area legislator, Mr. Castine. We, we have an invitation to talk to the area legislatures to see if we can get some help from the county level. We are, we are working together with the town supervisor, Mr. Trump Lee, in Champlain, along with the village mayor, Mr. Fredericks, as well as the town supervisor and town moors. We're all facing these huge increases in EMS service, so we're trying to combat it as much as possible. Obviously, wages, the cost of the fuel, the cost of material is all added to our quandary of a problem, but we're working on it, and I think we have some ideas, but we're still working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do. Nick Southman, seventeen Washington. I just wanted to comment that I'm very happy to see so many positive news stories about Ross's Point in the news regarding the business rec center, and I want to point out that in most of those stories, I've seen our administrator, Chris Latchamore, highlighted in particular. I can say from a personal experience, anytime I've asked questions of him, he's very good on responses. So we're lucky to have him, and happy to see good things happening in the village.
Thank you very much, Mr. Southman. I, we are very fortunate to have Mr. Latchamore, very fortunate indeed. And we can all work together, and we can make this a better village. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So vote?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All those opposed? I got it. Thank everyone for showing up.
Thank you for all coming.